Didn't get the announcement, but it was recording, so we should be good.
Great. All right, we'll call to order the Judiciary Personnel and Licensing Committee meeting at 7:03 PM. All trustees are present, and we have one item on the agenda, review of proposed 2025 Human Resources Manual amendments. And before we jump into it, were there any updates or comments from staff? Just to get us started here, otherwise we can jump right into trustees.
Sure, just a handful of changes that were made. So I'll thank the JPPL Committee for comments made at the last meeting. Did go ahead and update two section, two appendices, so you'll notice new, two new bullets in the memo. For appendix F, the conflict of interest policy, I think no trustee Stokebran had found about the social welfare fund. So modified the language there just a bit, so we could reiterate about the acceptance of gifts and kind of what to do, just providing a little bit more guidance for employees. Additionally, for the updated hours at village hall, the public building access was also updated. That was for appendix J for the security policy. So outside of that, the other discussions, we, those were the changes of note that were made in the next draft that's now in the packet.
So was it, what page was the social welfare fund in? Did we, do we still have one?
That was on page sixty-four. There was, yeah, I believe that was a holdover. It should be, well, shoot, I believe it's around page sixty or so in that appendix, which again was appendix F. And I believe that the social welfare fund was a holdover from maybe a case manager role with North Shore Health, which was just something that's a little bit older. It predates me, but again, left it for a little while and thank you for the catch.
Oh, so it's gone.
That's correct. But there are addition, there's a little bit more language on what to do if somebody does want to provide a gift to a village employee. Just really reiterates that, you know, it can be bad in the eyes of the public for village members of staff to be accepting gifts or gratuities.
And so we had discussed, there was some, some discussion about taking out the notice about a vacancy, and I felt strongly that that should remain in. Is there a problem leaving that in? Could we keep that part in?
Not a problem per se. It was something that was left just based on the feedback that staff provided last time, just with flexibility. Again, I'm not trying to dig in or make any sort of judgments or anything about that. It was just the suggestion from staff.
Okay, and my feeling is, you know, this is just one way to provide some transparency, accountability and oversight. It's typically not something that otherwise comes before the board. We don't know about openings. And so I think, and I think residents too would appreciate, you know, if they're going through the packet and they say, oh, I didn't know that Chris Anderson left or whatever, you know, something like that. I think it's just a good idea to keep it in the sunlight, as it were.
If I can speak to that, I'm happy to. On the transparency piece, we actually have announcements that go out that are either included in the village manager's memo, which I would argue that more people see the manager's memo than open the packet. Then we have also posted on our bulletin boards, we have a space dedicated outside the library doors where we also post those job announcements. So when those positions are available, it is publicized in those ways as well.
And so like, let's say somebody leaves in public, leaves in public works, that's part of the village manager's memo?
Not the departure per se, but definitely when the, when the announcement for the position, when we're announcing the vacancy, we've put those in the manager's memo in the past.
Or is in the update?
Manager's memo, the memo that goes out on Thursdays to the public. Over three thousand subscribers now.
Okay, I don't remember seeing that. Anyway, I, you know, we meet all the, we do meet, if there's a problem with time, we do meet. We do have special meetings. If it, the only thing is, you know, we meet every two weeks. If someone gives two weeks' notice, you clearly have, you know, obviously two weeks right built into the system then. And the, you know, we clearly meet. If we need an extra meeting, we have a meeting. I think we did in January because bids came in too high for the lead service laterals, so we had a special meeting. So the, you know, meeting every two weeks provides an opportunity. I'd like to see that chain, that stay in. It's just one small thing we can do to continue to be transparent.
Just to be, to be clear, we wouldn't wait to advertise. We would advertise and then come to the board because we want to cut down on that lead time, particularly if it's a two-week lead time, and that's what we currently do. So if there, if we get something and we want to advertise right away because time is of the essence, we will go to advertise for the position and then bring it to you thereafter, like we've been doing.
So it would come to the board under the consent agenda after the position is offered to somebody?
Sometimes yes. Yeah, more than that, we've been doing that because it's been more challenging to fill positions. And so two weeks can be, you know, a longer period of time, but we've been doing that pretty customarily for the last four years.
So it's been working. The consent agenda item is working.
Again, the example I gave last time, which I know would be perhaps only once or twice a year, when we don't have multiple meetings over the summer months per se. So that was my only safeguard was if we know a position is budgeted and has been previously approved and there's no changes to it, then it would just be a little bit of flexibility for staff. But I also hear what you're saying and what manager Wald is saying.
Yeah, I think it's important if we are looking at reduction in force in the future because of our budget constraints. It's really helpful, I think, for residents and certainly for me as a trustee to have that right in the meeting packet where I can. It doesn't seem like a big ask to me, and if, if we need to meet to approve something for a position, we've done it in the past.
All right, any other questions or concerns? Do you have anything? I, I don't feel the same need, so I'm happy to just make the motion to approve exactly what we have. And if it goes, it goes. If not, it's not. So I will just make the motion here. I move to forward the 2025 Human Resources Manual to the full village board for adoption. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, the motion carries as is to one, and any other last comments or concerns? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I did have one other thing. I'm sorry. So sometimes we have athletic wear and sometimes we have tennis shoes. I just, it's just a style thing. Might as well be consistent.
Oh, it's, it's, it appears to two different ways?
Yeah, I thought, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Athletic wear and tennis shoes, okay.
Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
You second.
Oh, do we never, oh, second, yeah, sorry. Second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned at 7:11 PM.
Are we good? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:30. All trustees are present except for trustee Kudo, who is excused this evening. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been noticed and posted according to law.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank you for your time, talent and patience in advance as we conduct business this evening. I would like to take a moment of silence. Today, we learned that Alderman Jonathan Brastow died very suddenly, and he was a great friend, father, son, colleague and many other things to many people, I'm sure, but truly an advocate for justice. And so I ask that we take a moment of silence at this time. All right, thank you. And with that, let us reconnect and commit to doing the business for the common good and taking care of each other as we do it. Tonight, we have one order, Special Order of Business, Consider Shorewood Business Improvement District 2025 Operating Plan and Request for North Oakland Avenue Construction Signage. So this comes to us from the bid. This is an annual action that we take. Director Henning, is there anything that you would like to say? Or would you like us to just open for questions? So I will open it for questions, and as you recall, this is not just a procedural action, it is one of commitment and renewing our support of the bid moving forward into 2025. But as you know, we also don't have, you are a separate entity. So with that, I would open it for questions or a motion.
Hi Janet, thank you for being here and sending across this operating plan for 2025. Just curious, outside of the signage, is there anything else you guys anticipate the village can help with as far as communication with North Oakland Avenue? Microphone.
Hello?
Mm-hmm.
No, you know, I was just talking to Leanne over here, and I think we have a pretty good communication plan set up. I think the signage is going to be a huge help in communicating to the businesses and also people coming into Shorewood, customers, clients of all the businesses to help direct them around the streets while the project is in, in motion. But no, I think the signs are the biggest part of what we're looking for help with.
And just to clarify, that the village had asked for the bid to define what that proposal would be, so we would have an estimate for budgeting purposes as we look at the funds recorded from TID five as we moved into the 2025 budget calendar year. So the estimate will be further refined because we all know that no one holds prices for two years. So Janet will be coming back with the required special privilege permits and final design at such time later this year or early next year.
Yep.
And thank you very much for your hard work on this.
No problem.
So this would be part of the village budget for the project? We would pay for the signs?
The village would, but technically that funding would come from TID five, which is the same funding mechanism for the project itself.
And that's Metro Market?
Correct.
I have no. Then you probably can't have too many. I guess, are we going to direct people parking?
We were going to put a QR code on there and then, which would in turn direct to a website, which would have additional parking lots, parking regulations on side streets, traffic flows. So again, hoping to communicate out to the community, multiple parking options so that hopefully there's no confusion over where to go while the project's going on.
I suppose the best messengers are the business owners.
Yep, and getting that communication out to them with that QR code hopefully will help. They can pass it along to their clients and customers as well.
All right, well, thank you for all the hard work. We have a thriving business district. We appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve? Trustee, you're single?
So I move to approve the 2025 bid operating plan and request North Oakland Avenue Construction Signage.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion?
Just one more question. Was shop, open shop a new thing and how did that go? I see it's on the calendar.
It was. So the shops opened Shorewood was an initiative by the bid and the collaboration with the small businesses to, again, draw more people into Shorewood and go to the stores and merchants. It went pretty well. This was, again, kind of our initial year, so there'll be a survey going out to those who participated. We had, I think it was thirty-one businesses, which is a pretty good, a pretty decent showing for the first year. And hopefully refining it again for 2026, whether it's timing, day that worked, months that we're doing it. Yeah, seemed to go pretty well.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have now accepted the plan for 2025.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. All right, that concludes the Special Order of Business. We move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any discussion?
Full item A.
Okay, five A. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of five A, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda, that would be five A. Presentation of Accounts, November fourth, 2024. Trustee Stokebran.
In going through the, the accounts today, I couldn't help but notice I added up the, the credit card fees, and it's about a thou, eight thousand dollars. It actually the, the biggest charge for the police department was, the biggest item was credit card fees. And I know I've brought this up before, but we have a new finance team, and I think it would be something to look at when your biggest charge for the police department is we're paying the credit card fees for people who are paying their fines. And since we're to the point where we're looking for coins between the sofa cushions, I think this is something that we can't be the only ones, you know, paying those fees for people. Anyway, I think, I think it's something we need to look at when we look at the budget next year. And so with your permission, President McCabe, I would move to approve the financials in five A.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebran, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any discussion?
I would just say I agree. I think it's worth looking, looking at that.
Yeah, I as well. I agree.
All right, thank you. We can take that up as an item for future consideration or, you know, duly noted to bring it back in, in due time. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Public Hearing, there are none this evening. Item eight, Citizens to be Heard. Are there any citizens to be heard this evening? I don't think we have anyone online either. Okay, quiet night. We have two items for new business. Nine A, Consider Award of Contract for the 2024-25 Private Lead Service Line Replacement Project. This comes to us from Director Bushlick. It's pretty straightforward. All the materials are in our packet. I'm hoping everyone had a time to review those. I believe there were some questions submitted by trustee Stokebran for which we have the answers here. Are there any technical questions at this time or points that need clarified? None, I would take a motion.
I move to award a line item contract to Essential Sewer and Water Services LLC in the amount of four hundred seventy-three thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and no cents. Second.
Is there any direction with regards to the North Kramer Street properties? That was an option for the motion?
Oh, yeah, you didn't want to take it separately?
Oh, you can.
Yeah, I thought we were.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the contract? Any discussion?
I did have a question for Leanne. It just looked like it was quite a bit lower than all the other bids and, you know, I like, always like to go with the lowest bidder if possible, but are you confident that it's, there's not any, you know, anything that makes it too good to be true or any catch?
It's considerably lower than what we were expecting to see. They are finishing a job, as I understand it, in South Milwaukee right now, and we've contacted South Milwaukee for comment, and they're very pleased with the work that they did.
All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the Kramer request? Trustee Stokebran.
I move to direct staff to add to the project thirteen additional properties served by water main in the thirty-eight-hundred block of North Kramer Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, trustee, motion by trustee Stokebran, seconded by trustee Lynn. Director Bushlick?
Just would like to make two clarification comments, please. Note, in the, the motion, it says served by water main in the thirty-eight-hundred block of Kramer. There are properties that fall in the thirty-eight-hundred block of Kramer but are actually served by, their services come off a water main on either Shorewood or Beverly.
Oh, okay.
So that's the purpose of that clarification. The water main for these three properties is new, and so it does have non-led public services. The other comment I just want you to be aware of, the, the other properties that we've identified for this project received notice of this project some time ago. These new properties, the, the addition of these new properties, I would begin notifying them tomorrow with a letter in the mail, which doesn't even actually give them an entire month for the projected start or possible start of the work. So I just want to be very clear and transparent about that. Someone could say, whoa. I'm, I'm not, I really don't have anything more to say other than I just want everyone to be aware that that is going to be the scenario.
The risk of good prices.
So the, there were like, how many was it last year with the Globe contract? Those were the ones, part of the downer.
Correct, there were thirty-ish.
And so then we're adding hundred and then plus the thirteen.
Correct.
I did see though that there's a meeting on November twenty-ninth.
Not the twenty-ninth, it would be that Thursday before Thanksgiving.
I mean, hopefully there'll be plenty of time for people to find out about the meeting, so if they have questions, you know, if it goes in the mail tomorrow.
Well, they've already received one letter with the meeting date. The one hundred and thirty-three properties, I anticipating your award of this contract, I have those stuffed and addressed and ready to get dropped in the mail tomorrow, but I will then add thirteen more letters for the additional properties.
You're right, it's the twenty.
That'll be the second notification of the meeting date for the first one hundred. It'll be new to these thirteen.
Thanks for letting us know. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to the next good news item from the Department of Public Works. Deferral of, I forget the language. Deferral of the CC Phase Two A lining program. So this also comes to us from Director Bushlick. Is there anything that you want to let us know before we open discussion?
I, I do have a, a brief clip of the televising video just to show you.
Excellent.
Just because I think it's really interesting.
Yes, of course. Thank you for saying that, because I always say it to her. This is pretty cool. When people don't loggle.
Who's got that doggo?
This is Prospect Avenue.
Is that Cream City Brick down there?
Yes.
And so some people are like, no, you can't have pipe made up.
Oh, yeah, you can. Yeah.
How big is it, just for reference?
It's, it varies. It's in the sixty-inch range. This is actually, like, you'll see that the pipe that's feeding into this line, that's an elliptic, elliptical. Typically don't use elliptical pipe. Now everything is round because most of it's precast concrete. So just kind of what you're seeing here, that, that would be dry weather flow on the bottom. The, the white areas, that, that's just calcification of the brick that typically happens over time when you have this type of moist environment. We're not really sure. It's at least a hundred years old.
Is this our first pitch of this?
No, it's not. But this is from September, as you can see. I think that varies. I'd say, oh, I'm not even going to guess. I'm not exactly sure where we are, what we're looking at, what the depth of that is. That's the, the lineal feet from the point that the camera started. So when the, the televising company does reports, which our staff later reviews, if they see something of note, they'll say, okay, at, at twenty-three-point-two feet, we're seeing X. And we get a written report in addition to the video, so then we can go back and check what they've marked and what they see.
And so next year, when we pave the look at storm sewers, we, will we, in hopes of avoiding any kind of a sinkhole, could we expect to see something like this, or will they all be much?
They'll be smaller and they, I don't believe the larger ones are brick. They.
So eventually, the plan would be to line this whole thing?
Eventually, right.
Which would cover up the brick with some.
Yep.
I know, exactly. I want to move in there.
Did it on Shorewood, the truck was pumping outside my house all night.
Historic preservation.
Well, we have the video to.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to remember that one.
So they, you can't see it in this segment of video, but there is a small crack that's developed in the mortar along the top of the pipe. And that's something that Strand recommended that we have repaired. Based on field observations, this is actually, appears in most areas to be a depth of two brick layers. And we have a couple of areas where, like you can see, there's some, that's probably not the best, but, but there's a couple of areas where that one of the bricks is loose or falling, and so we're going to, you know, we want to go in and have those items repaired. But I just don't believe that it's necessary at this point in time to, to line this pipe. So what you're seeing on the right there, that stain, that dark color, at the top of the screen, there's actually a lateral that feeds into the pipe, and when the camera gets there, it'll pan up, and you'll see. Yeah.
Robotic?
It, it won't be us. I mean, our, our utility staff is, is trained, but you know, that's not, it's not something we do regularly and for safety reasons, I, I would be far more comfortable with a contractor who specializes in that. Oh, yeah, I don't think I need it, but. Yeah, that was the manhole rungs, or that was the ladder, that, so that was a manhole.
Yeah.
This is the jumpscare. This is some sort of fake, like Halloween video.
Oh, I, I looked, I, I saw no eyes. We overall. We, we almost always see critters. I didn't see any in this one.
Oh, really? You see things down here?
Oh, yeah. Typically red eyes and long tails. So, so that's a lateral that's coming into the pipe. You can see that one's actually in pretty good shape. The connection is as well.
Was something you'd use this video when you would go out for bids, send to con?
Yeah. Well, we, we have it available. We let them know that we have it available. I mean, this, this is helpful to everyone. They know exactly. You know, typically when contractors don't know what they're getting into, the price gets, you know, it just, they have to, they have to cover themselves, right? have to, they have to cover themselves, right? We can show them this, we get a much better picture of what we're dealing with.
We should put this on the Village Facebook. I think it'd be, people would want to see it.
Funny that you mentioned that. We're going to feature it in the manager's.
When was the last time we did, that we did a.
I don't know. Prior to this, I believe the last time we televised this particular segment of pipe was 2018.
And is this sort of a one of a kind in Shorewood?
It is not. No, there, there's another run. I believe it's on Maryland.
Prospect.
I'm, I, I believe we're moving north. When, when people report water in their basements, that means it can't get in this pipe. Yep, so that's, that's, so now we've reached the end of this run. So now you see the, the ladder rungs up to a manhole. And I believe that's the end of this particular segment. Yep.
Wait to see all the sewer footage next year.
Yeah.
Need a special public works.
So I think what we're just looking for is your acknowledgement of that this plan not to bond for this lining project. And then happy to have you put into the motion direction to staff to follow the, the televising schedule that staff recommended, which is every three to five years.
Would anybody care to make that motion?
I move that the SEACSI Phase 2A large pipe lining project be removed from both the 2025 LRP implementation schedule and planned 2025 bond issue. I further move that staff be directed to reevaluate the sewer segments condition every three to five years as recommended by the Village engineer.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Bushlick.
That was great. Thanks a lot.
Have a safe drive home.
And that concludes new business for this evening. We move on to reports of Village officials. I can't think of any at this time. Trustees, trustee McGovern?
Sure. I'll provide an update on the state budget requests I discussed at the last meeting. Just to remind you, we had a request come in from Darren Madison's office that went out to all the local elected officials, saying if there's anything you want in the budget, let us know. So I, I gave him a call just to kind of get a little more information on how this works because it's just, it was just a forum where you get 200 words. So I just wanted to talk to him a little bit more about it. I'd mentioned putting in a request for help with the lead laterals and water mains last time. And he recommended doing that and also the other big infrastructure items that we have coming up, like the DPW and the streetlights. So that's what this is that was on your desk. That's the 200-word request on behalf of the Village of Shorewood that I put in. Because they have a deadline of the first so that his staff can look at it. And then there's a little bit more time before it goes to the governor's office on the 15th. And then we discussed having the ICC make a request on water mains and lead laterals as well, because obviously Shorewood's not the only one. And if there's, if it's only a request from Shorewood, it's probably not all that likely that we get it. But all the municipalities in Milwaukee County have the same need, in many cases, much greater than ours. So he recommended bring it up with the ICC, which was, I guess, kind of already underway, that there were a number of communities that wanted to get together and pass a resolution asking for some help from the state. So Ann and I had a chat with a couple of the ICC members, representatives of the county, city of Milwaukee, the mayor of West Dallas, and maybe one other.
Wauwatosa.
Wauwatosa, about doing a, kind of getting that process underway. So there's going to be a discussion of it at the next meeting on the 12th and then probably a vote at the meeting in December. Just that, you know, it takes a little time to get everybody on board with the ICC. But Representative Madison seemed pretty, you know, he seemed pretty optimistic that if there was something from all of the, that if ICC requested it, that he, he, he thought the Milwaukee delegation would all be on board and there'd be a good shot at getting something in the budget for water mains and lead laterals. So, you know, no promises or anything. And I, I kind of view this as like sort of the beginning of lobbying process for, for us being in the budget. Representative Madison also mentioned that it, it could be helpful for some of us maybe to go meet with members, you know, early next year as the legislators are putting together their budget. Hopefully we'll have a little bit more moderate legislature after the next election and maybe a better shot at spending some of this surplus on these kind of things that local governments need. The, the surplus is 4.6 billion, which is up a billion from projections earlier this year. And I know there will be a lot of requests from communities all around the state, school districts will be asking for funding. There's a whole lot of needs, but I feel like we're, we're off to a good start with trying to get something for Shorewood in there.
Man, fantastic work. Thank you so much. That is, that is great work.
Yeah, it's been really nice working with you on this and I really appreciate it, especially with the timing of everything. Couldn't have pulled it off without your help.
Thanks.
And we did find through that meeting that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has had an informational hearing on this item. And so there's, it really is a statewide infrastructure concern. So we're going to invite them to the next ICC meeting as well.
Do we know, I, Evers announced the distribution of 273 million, I believe it was today, to 86 municipalities through the Safe Drinking Water Program. I sent an email to Darren today to see if we're among them. Do we have any idea?
To get to apply for that, right? Yeah, it's a.
They give a very brief list. They don't.
All right, thank you. Further reports?
Just make a quick statement. I'd first just like to thank Clerk Harold and the office for all their hard work leading up to the election, which is tomorrow. Record turnout and early voting already. My ballot was processed seamlessly. Very grateful to have that service here in Shorewood. And then just encourage everyone in the public to please vote tomorrow if you have not voted already.
Trustee Stokbrand?
I would just like to say that I went and it's big and it's beautiful and it should be a huge recruiting tool. Amazing, amazing space. And I also wanted to report that the Parks and Public Spaces Committee has submitted their request for execution on the three items that we voted on last, the last meeting. Efforts to update the 207 code, put signs on the Oak Leaf Trail to advocate for safe usage, and efforts to address reckless driving. And they're also working on recommendations on the Bike Ped Master Plan and the Outdoor Recreation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kathy, how about the League of Municipalities? Did you go to that conference and how was that?
I did. I, you know, there was just, there's so much information. It's hard to, I do think though, it was important, I went to the how to make the most of your TIF workshop and they did say, and I think I, I sent an email, that we can use 25% of our TIF money for streetlights, for infrastructure, like streetlights and water mains. I think there was, I had a misconception that it had to be things like new windows, insulation, that was something had to do with making them more energy efficient. And you could use them for that, but you can also use them for infrastructure, like we're looking. So that was helpful. We talked a little bit about, I was speaking with the league attorney a little bit about fees. We're looking at a streetlight fee. They did say that there is an appetite among some organizations to pursue fees in court. And so, you know. And I think we are all aware of the Count of Buchanan and the Pewalk. So there are organizations looking to pursue those where they're enacted.
Thank you. All right, Village Manager? Okay, future items of consideration. We have one item from trustee Kudo. It's in our packet. Explore closing of streets for 2025 trick or treat. So in his absence, the memo is here. Do I have a motion to pursue that as an item of future consideration?
Yep, so I move to have the Community and Business Relation, the Community and Business Relations Committee review this further within the context of current street closure and block party standards.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee Lynn. All those in favor say aye?
I just have one question.
Discussion?
Is this done other places and they don't close the, like every residential street? Do they just block off certain streets or?
Yep, I, I'm, yes.
Yeah, I mean, in Washington Heights, they'll block.
Okay.
Obviously, but yeah. And typically the streets that are blocked off are in some sort of a rotation. And then the houses on the streets, you know, kind of just informally agree with each other to, to prepare with a lot of candy and decorations and things like that, you know? So that, just from what I've seen in other communities.
There's a couple of blocks already doing this, so I think it'd be nice to maybe have it be a little bigger.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This will be referred to the Community and Business Relations Committee at a future date that, that's in keeping with how we rotate through things as we remove things from the agenda, we put things on the agenda. All right, I don't, yes.
Should I make a motion then about having business and finance look at the 2026 budget? Looking, look at possibly using some TIF 1 money for infrastructure costs?
Well, I believe, I'm not sure. I don't know procedurally. I don't know the answer to that question.
Could be taken offline for a little bit and, and look at that next week or in two weeks.
I think for this year, it's too late, is my understanding. I, the finance team didn't respond at all. So I'm guessing that meant that it was, I don't know, Rebecca, do you know? I didn't get a response, so. It would be 2026 budget at this.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe, yeah, we can look into, flesh it out and then have it agendaged so that we all know what it is, what the, that the request would be and what procedure it would follow.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by, to adjourn by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee McGovern. Any objections? We stand adjourned at 8:04. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
And vote.
Good luck tomorrow, everybody.